Leverage funds and communication processes. So go on to the next. So today we're presenting with our full executive committee here, and I want to stress the importance of the buy-in of youth partners, without which none of this would be possible. This is a true partnership. So go ahead.
My name is Jay Cooper. I'm with Miami Valley Community Action Partnership, and I serve as Assistant Housing Service Director, which manages the weatherization program.
My name is Amanda Harrelson. I am the neighborhood director with Rebuilding Together Dayton, and I manage our contracts and scale the contract.
Adam Blake, Vice President of Housing with County Corp. Manage all of our home repair and development, housing development projects.
Ellen Sizer, I'm a planner for the city of Dayton, and I've had the honor of being a project manager for several ARPA projects, and like naturally overlaps with the efforts of the Dayton Home Repair Network, so happy to be here.
David Malk, I'm the Development Director at Habitat for Humanity in Greger, Dayton. We're very involved in critical repair work in the city, but also build new homes as well. Just kicked off two new homes on Mainland Avenue, really excited about that. Also, just want to mention, we got Galen Curry with us, Galen heads up our Critical Repair Department, and One Need the Black is our Development Associate, does a lot of our grant writing force.
Jerry Farley, I'm the Executive Director for Youth Build Dayton, and I'm also the Vice President of Career Tech for Oakmont Education and Liberty High School is one of our schools.
And I'm Eileen Paul, I'm the Executive Director of Dayton Energy Collaborative. So our mission as a network is to provide critical home repair, energy efficiency, and safety reservices to under-resourced households.
And those are in the back? You didn't...
We're the community development team. We're here as one of the founders.
Okay, thank you, very good, thank you.
So yes, we work together to bring all these services to under-resourced households in Dayton, mostly have to be income-qualified. Our goal is to ensure that we leave no house with vital projects incomplete. So this is a breakdown of all of our partners, as there are many. So Dayton Energy Collaborative, we serve as a facilitator of the network. We also serve as a clearinghouse for the community. In addition, sorry, and then in addition, like I said earlier, the Department of Planning Neighborhoods and Development was able to, has been funded through some ARPA projects, and I just wanted to mention, in addition, the City Sustainability Office has been, from the beginning, supporting the Dayton Home Repair Network as well.
So for Rebuilding Together Dayton, we basically do urgent home repairs and accessibility modifications for senior homeowners in Montgomery County.
We manage various home repair grants that we are able to receive through the Ohio Department of Development, is one of the big ones, emergency and accessibility modifications and emergency repairs for homeowners.
Habitat for Humanity, you know, we've been part of the community now for 42 years, but our Critical Repair Program is really only about five years old. It really came to life after Memorial Day tornadoes. We're very involved in that process. And then it's really kind of organically grown over the years. What we saw is there was a real appetite in the community for this work, there was a need for this work, so, and we had staffed up for it. Again, I point to Galen, lifelong Daytonian, brought him onto our team, and he's been amazing in working with the community and meeting those needs and building trust with those folks who are going to help out and provide the repairs for. We also had a big lift with the city of Dayton through the Roof Repair Program that we were able to implement with the ARPA funding, so we really appreciate that. You know, what you've seen over the last five years at Habitat is, you know, we did maybe 25, then it was 50, then it was 75, then last year, we did about 150 critical repairs, all for older adults living on low to moderate income within the city, almost all within the city of Dayton. So it's been great to see, we're really proud of the work that we're doing, and we can see, we believe we will continue to see growth in that program. We've added staff members to, you know, look out for that growth or to look forward to that growth, so really excited to be a part of this network. And also, the other thing I think for us is we're bringing other funding to the community, really active in FHLB Cincinnati. In the last few years, we've brought close to $2 million into the city of Dayton through FHLB grants and funding that we've been able to implement, and also with the state of Ohio through our Habitat for Humanity network, we brought $1.5 million into the community for new home construction and also for critical repair projects.
Okay, Miami Valley Community Action, our emergency home repair program came about working in conjunction with our weatherization program to help with critical home repair services to our low-income families in our community. And we also leverage that program with our weatherization program, because certain critical home repairs we cannot do with that funding, so we're able to leverage the home repair program with the weatherization program to eliminate deferral issues. So that will be able to serve the client and give them more energy efficiencies, as well as health and safety issues with furnaces and wateries.
So Liberty High School and Youth Build Dayton, we're the workforce development arm. We have 12 to 16 young men and young women who are looking to go into construction for their post-secondary placement for a career. We wanted to be more involved in the neighborhood where our school is, so we decided that critical home repairs was essential to being a part of that. We also bring some of the Department of Labor funds to handle projects where the other money cannot be spent, so we just feel like that's a critical piece. And then in partnership with like Miami Valley Community Action, we're adding additional stackable credentials for things like weatherization, blower door tests, and really getting our students prepared to enter a world where green technology is a huge part of construction.
So as you can tell, this list includes all of the grants that were brought together on different projects in 2024, and I think this really showcases how by working together, the Dayton Home Repair Network has been able to like maximize the input, the impact of grant funding, and so like that in turn, about $4.1 million came to the Dayton Home Repair Network partners from the Dayton Recovery Plan as well. So the benefits, obviously, one is the maximizing of funding. We can address more on each house, and then every individual that applies uses our universal application, so they're applying for weatherization and home repairs at the same time, which addressing those two together is the most effective way to reduce energy bills in a household, and then together collectively, we have a wider reach as well. So the next few slides, I'm going to take you through our process, outlining everything from the application phase to actually project coordination phase. So the first few steps, the resident is going to be highly involved. They will reach out to us. Steps two and three, our staff will help determine eligibility through walking the resident through our Dayton Home Repair Network screener, and then we will send out, mail out, or drop off a universal application. We will also, we also offer application support, that's anything from one-on-one appointments at the home, to printing materials, to assisting get on the Ohio Fair Plan, or a payment plan for property taxes, which are both requirements for some of our partners. The resident must complete that application, and then they submit it to DEC, and then again, our staff take over from here. We will then submit that application to the applicable program. Not everyone is eligible for everything, so we do that work of deciding who that application needs to go to. And then we add that applicant to our Dayton Home Repair Network project tracking spreadsheet, which is shared amongst all of our partners. And this brings us into the project management steps, which Dave will take us through.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing that I see and what I love about our network and our team is, we really have to build trust with these residents when you're talking to them and working with them to provide this support and these services. So I think that's really one of the secret sauces of our network and our team. I really love working with the Ellen Curry, who's amazing at building those trusts and setting expectations. I mean, these repairs can be extensive, and they don't, you know, they don't happen overnight. So just setting expectations, managing the flow of the repair, and making sure everybody is in the loop as far as communication, and I think through Eileen and the other network partners and some of our boots-on-the-ground folks like Galen, it really, it really makes it, it makes it effective in what we're doing. So kind of assessing, approving, you know, a lot of these grants have income thresholds, so you know, one of the things that we say at Habitat for Humanity, I know our other partners say as well, is, you know, if we don't necessarily have grant funding that's going to be applicable right now, we don't say, oh, you're just not eligible, go away, we say, hey, wait till our next round of funding comes in, or something like that, we're going to get you on a waitlist, we're going to, we're going to help you when you can. We do have to sometimes assess income thresholds, and that might disqualify somebody, but if you're, if you meet our income requirements, we're going to try really hard to work with you and make sure we can do the repair. The other thing about the network is, you know, we might be able to do one thing really well and then working with another partner, they can step in, and so we can address multiple things at every household. We're going to get into some of those projects that have been touched by multiple partners, but I think that allows us to get the household back to as safe as possible through working through the different partners and opportunities that are available. The other thing that I love is, you know, we all talk, we meet every month, and we have a, you know, we have a network of contractors that we really trust, and so sharing those resources, sharing that information together, make sure we're hiring, as you see, hire best and lowest bid. I really lean into that word best. We have some folks that we really know can do the job and go above and beyond almost every time, I will almost say every time, to make sure the residents that we're supporting have the support and have everything they need when the, when the job is completed. And then obviously, we want to make sure we're meeting the expectations of the homeowners, so that post-project assessment and survey is very important as well. And I think something to share with that, we've got some funders, CareSource, I've mentioned in particular, that wants us to do a health survey. So we do a health assessment on at least some and most of the jobs. It's amazing with these residents to see how much their health can improve before we do the work and then afterwards. I've been amazed, and it's been a real eye-opener for me, to see the health conditions improve in some of these households and homeowners because of the work that we've been able to do, the mold mitigation, the moisture mitigation has been amazing, and so a health survey is a part of our assessment as well.
So taking you through, so sometimes there's no funding available, and that means sometimes we have to stop and put people on waitlists. So at this point in time, everyone has their own internal waitlist, so those five home repair and weatherization programs, as well as DEC, we have an internal waitlist. Right now, our process, what we're working on is, we're going to combine all those waitlists, look for duplicates, and then really get an idea of what that number is. Right now, before having done that work, we are estimating about 1,500 to 2,000 people on the collective waitlist, which is a lot of people, and so we're going to map those addresses, determine geographic areas of highest need, but the goal here is that the next time we all have funding, we can really address this list, especially those houses that have been on the waitlist for a long time, and the houses with urgent needs. So that's our current project that we're working on, and then if you go to the next slide, there's also...
I have a question.
Yeah.
How far back is the waitlist? Is it two, three, five?
It can be, it's years, I would say, I don't know, you probably go back the furthest, maybe up to five years.
Five years.
About five years.
Yeah, and just to give some scope, average repair on these large jobs are around $30,000, so that'll give you an idea of the need in the community.
Thank you.
And so, and between these programs, we leverage a lot of funding, but there are still gaps. So we've developed two projects over the last two years to hopefully address those gaps, and so this happens when a partner brings a project that we know is important, such as accessibility issue, but no one has funding for, or no one can address right now, and it's sort of urgent, and so I'll turn over to Jerry to talk about how Liberty High School, your process for bringing in and filling in gaps for our houses.
Sure. So our construction students, one of our big components is work-based learning. You can't learn how to swim by standing on the side of a pool. So whether we're building a house for Habitat or for County Corp, there are times in the building process where our students are not able to be in the home. We need them to do something that gives back to the community, that makes learning real. And so when we learned about the Home Repair Network, we thought, this is perfect, because it gives us short projects that we can do, but it doesn't get us inside of the house. Sometimes if we go inside a house with young students, it can just be a, it can get a little tangled, let's say. So doing outside projects is really best, but it's significant, because the funds won't cover it, but it's critical, like a wheelchair ramp or a front porch that has pulled off, where funding can't go to that, because it's not part of the house. But imagine the gap of that porch pulling away from the home and the problem that creates. So the problem goes to the Dayton Home Repair Network. Eileen and the crew, they look at it, they talk with the resident, and then we sit down with our constructor, our construction instructor, and we see, can we do it, and how much money of the $15,000 a year that we give will go to those projects, and try to do as many projects, flush it, as many projects in the year as our time allows. And so we have the capacity to do five projects a year with $15,000. That's just with Youth Build Dayton. If we needed more, Liberty High School is willing to contribute.
Jerry? I just want to say, I learned how to swim, because I was standing on the side of the pool. If someone pushed me in, I really had to learn real quick. But I want to talk about the critical components that you provide with the training of our young people, former young people, because of the fact that we have probably over the last 30, 40 years, reduced the training of the patient program in our regular public schools, and it's created this big void for us in a lot of areas, not just in terms of the construction work, but also in terms of technology, heating, plumbing, all the type of things that allow us to learn in those large classes back in the day. The aspect of the work that you're doing with young people, do you see the increase both in terms of interest and anticipation, can young people walk into those spaces?
Yes, as a matter of fact, the attendance rate of our youth that are in Career Tech is nearly double the attendance rate of our youth that are not involved in Career Tech. We are a pre-apprenticeship program, our students complete courses at a higher rate, graduate at a higher rate, they are placed in jobs, and our placement rate across our entire network is about 87%, but for Youth Build Dayton, our placement rate is in the low 90s, our retention rate is in the low 90s, and we have more jobs available for the youth that go into it. And our average wage per hour is almost $20 in this sector. So it's a game changer, it changes the financial trajectory. And then the last part I want to add that I think is critical, is we are committed to providing supports for one full year after graduation. As our young people learn to navigate adulthood, it cannot be just the diploma and good luck. We have to help them, whether it's problems with childcare, transportation, food insecurity, or just communicating better with their employer, we feel like that's critical, and we see the benefits from it.
Yeah, I know, every place I go, I'm talking about getting more and more of our young people in some of these spaces, and apprenticeship programs, that's what you do, or some of these spaces, because now it is a benefit on the temporary basis of learning, but long-term, it helps us increase the median income, and continues to go up as far as citywide is concerned. And also those individuals, once they do become homeowners, that they're in a position where if something has a minor fix that's needed, you know, before it gets worse, you know, we talked days ago, years ago, those who got gray hair like me, we know about the aspect of, they talk about the frame, wall filter, you change the wall filter and change the oil, or you wind up changing the engine. Changing the engine is much more expensive, but the work you're doing, I really appreciate that.
Thank you, I would like to add one thing. Research suggests that every dropout that does not change the trajectory of their life will cost a community about $308,000 over the span of their life. So when, when we talk about getting these youth, putting them into a sector where there is a labor shortage, we're also impacting our community for the tax base, and home buyers, and all of the good things with turning someone's life around.
Great, Liberty actually is working on a project that Habitat has out by the VA, turning the house around, and they're doing a fantastic job. I'll drop in to see those kids working, they're having fun, they're learning, you know, and they're just enjoying it, they're engaged. Jerry just told me a minute ago, before the meeting started, that he had a graduate who, from years ago, started his own business, and then that graduate is hiring people from the program as they graduate, and so you talk about a give-back, you know what I mean? And you and I had conversations before about how important this is for young people who college is not, you know, on their radar, but you know, it's a wonderful program, Habitat's proud of working in conjunction with them in this Dayton Home Repair Network.
Yes, and they're currently, they're currently building an accessibility branch for one of the houses that County Corps worked on. So I'll talk briefly about our gap project program. DEC started this last year when we saw a need for, there were deferral issues, so that's when a house gets in, they get into a house and there's bugs, there's pests, or there's mold, too much mold that we can't address, and they have to walk away from the house, so in order to reduce that, or when there's a vital project, usually the first project that no one has funding for, we wanted to take care of those, so DEC started this gap project program to do that. So we do all the same things, we in-house, we coordinate the project, hire, and work with the contractor and resident to complete that. And if you go to the next slide, we have some examples. This is an example, there was a house that had a beehive that was impacting, no contractors could work on the house, because from the roofers to the siding, to anyone interior either, until this was removed, so we had this removed. Other common projects include mold, pests, like I said. And if you have the next one, we have some pictures of the work that Liberty High School has done. One was, these are both in Twin Towers, and they're both code-compliant accessible stairs, which were not in place before. So briefly, I want to talk through this pilot that we did together. This is a one-neighborhood pilot in Twin Towers. If you go to the next slide. DEC did outreach, and we use this as an opportunity to find best practices to work in together. Collectively, we served 15 households, and then this is the pie chart breaks down the funding per number of households. Go ahead, next slide. This is one house that I want to break down the projects on. So this, we did outreach, we, DEC assisted with the application, and then our partners were able to complete several projects on this house. Go back, please.
So Rebuilding Together Dayton, it's hard to see in the first picture, but the existing porch and roof structure of the porch was basically detached from the house and falling in, so we had that removed, and then rebuilt porch and installed new handrails and replaced the windows in the front elevations.
Okay, also inside this home here, the emergency home repair program, we replaced the, updated the breaker electrical panel surface in this home, as well as with the weatherization of this home, we insulated the walls in the attic, did aggressive air cellish to help lower that utility bill, and also we removed old knob and tube wiring from any attic. So the whole picture of this is to show how we are leveraging the funding amounts that we have, because we are capped in some of our programs, and what we can spend on each home, but with leveraging, we're able to try to give this client the old wraparound services, what they need to repair their own.
This is also a sample of a gap project, so before they could weatherize, there were raccoons getting into the attic, and old insulation that was molding needed to be removed, so DEC leveraged funding to take care of that, so that it could then be weatherized.
Habitat for Humanity replaced the roof on the house, as a part of our role in it. The other thing I just want to mention, what I love about this whole deal is, this is now an affordable home, you know, this homeowner is going to be there for as long as they want, they could sell it, but you know, we build houses too, as you guys know, and you think about how much it costs to build a new house, you know, this house is going to be, you know, viable for a buyer someday, and so there's your affordable housing right there. The more of these houses we can preserve, the more we can allow people to enter the house, become homeowners at an affordable price. That's what I believe at Habitat, and that's what we believe at Habitat for Humanity, is that's your affordable housing in the future.
County Corp managed the replacement of the exterior siding on this home, and it's important to note that there's some economic development piece to this collaboration as well. We're doing, have been doing for the last two years, a serious outreach to minority contractors to get them involved in these programs, and it's starting to pay off, but it's a challenge.
Boy, do I have a program to do.
Good.
And I was thinking the same thing when the mention of the student entrepreneur who started his own business, and getting them a lot of work.
May I pose a question? Just a quick question, so I believe you mentioned that in terms of like if they wanted to sell, are there any clauses or any disclaimings for any participants who may opt into the program?
It could be, depending on the grants that are being used and the funding sources that are being used, so you saw the chart before, where there's like 20 or 25, that's like from the Habitat perspective, meaning after they need a house or anything like that. We want to preserve that for the homeowner, and we do, the only qualifier I will say is, we have some fans in Galen who don't, you have to have lived in the home for at least two years, we don't, we don't want to jump in, somebody just bought it and, hey, come over and fix my house, so it has to be owned by somebody. We actually work really closely to make sure there's no back taxes on the home, we want to make sure people are being, you know, doing that part, or have a plan to catch up on their taxes, but nothing on the back end as far as putting any means on the house or anything like that.
Thank you.
Homeowners insurance is usually on the...
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah, thank you.
Are we on time?
I'll give you a minute, because everybody has, we all been talking about that.
We do have a hard Saturday.
4:45. Yes, ma'am.
All right, go ahead. Okay, so then we want to talk about how we've leveraged fundings from the ARPA, Dayton Recovery Plan and ARPA funds, go ahead.
Habitat for Humanity, you may know, we had a roof partnership. I was just talking to Galen this morning, getting the updated numbers, we received $800,000 and we completed, as of today, we've completed 53 roofs, 51 roofs with that funding, and I think the funding is exhausted, or...
Pretty much.
Yeah, we might have a couple bucks left, but we've used all that funding, so we really appreciate it, it's been phenomenal.
For Rebuilding Together Dayton, we received $1.8 million for critical interior repairs and accessibility modifications. To date, we've completed just shy of 3,000 repairs and modifications on 123 homes, and we have, I think, three current projects in process.
County Corp received $1.5 million in ARPA funding to focus on homeowners that had exterior code violations and did not have the resources to address those, and we have, we will complete this month 50 of jobs.
And importantly, to Community Action Partnership, who did not get ARPA funding, everyone used the universal application to apply, so they still had the opportunity to receive work from Community Action Partnerships, both their home repair and weatherization programs. Okay, so a few more projects to highlight. This is a house in Old North Dayton that was served, DEC supported this resident with the application, then our partners are able to do several projects.
County Corp, we manage the roof, siding, gutters, soffit, face-up porch, and cleanup with ARPA funding and LetSafe Ohio funding.
For Rebuilding Together Dayton, we completed four repairs, including installing ventilation in the bathroom and the kitchen for better air quality. We replaced five windows in the home, repaired her central air conditioning, completed gutter cleanout, replaced her kitchen floor with slip-resistant solid surface flooring, replaced two exterior doors, and then installed a safety kit folder, which has like smoke detectors and grab bars and all that stuff.
And again, on this home here, Miami Valley Community Action, we did a lot of the weatherization, insulation in the walls, insulation in the attic, along with some air cellish.
And again, this one was deferred initially, because there was a bunch of clutter in the attic in the basement, so we went ahead, DEC funded a cleanout for the attic and basement, so that they could then put insulation in the house. This house is another example of an ARPA collaborative project with almost $90,000 of investment into it from four different partners. DEC again helped with the application support, and then started with exterior with County Corp.
Yeah, again, we use LetSafe Ohio, ARPA funds on this, and you can see that sign in the front yard, celebrating our partnership with LetSafe Ohio.
We did the roof at Habitat for Humanity.
For Rebuilding Together Dayton, completed electric door repairs, that was actually primarily knob and tube wiring still in the house, so we replaced that with RoMEX and installed new electrical service and panel. We also did some plumbing repairs, and we replaced the basement steps and handrail down to the basement for safe access.
And again, on this home, we performed the weatherization with the walls, in the attic, with the help of Rebuilding Together, removing the knob and tubing and walls, we were able to insulate the side walls on this home.
This one I just want to highlight, it was a tricky one to help with, we helped this individual get homeowners insurance through Ohio Fair Plan, which then made them eligible for County Corp. made them eligible for County Corps. And you did, go ahead to the next slide. You can see that huge difference.
Yeah, we're just, you drive through some of these neighborhoods, you can actually see a physical difference in what this collaboration has been able to achieve.
This is one I want to highlight, too. This is a hoarding house. We worked with this family, with family members of the owner here, and leveraged gap funding to do the, to do the clean out. If you go to the next slide. All I have is pictures from pre and post-clean out, but since then, Rebuilding Together has done extensive work on the interior of the house, and I won't have to go into details.
Yeah, so this homeowner actually did not have gas or water service for 12 years. So we worked with Center Point, and we worked with the water department. Sandy was fantastic, and he has had that restored. We replaced his furnace and his water heater, as well as supplied him with new kitchen appliances. And then you can see his bathroom was not functioning at all, so we restored his bathroom to a functional and accessible state, as well as did some electrical repairs and stuff like this.
So can we do this at this time? Because we're getting close to, I know the city manager wasn't here when we got started, but to allow the mayor and the commissioners for any questions or comments, and then I will make sure you get presentations as well. But, Mayor, I'm not, I'm just wanting to yell out the door, so.
Yo, I made my comment earlier, I guess, with questions, but I'm just so, so enamored with this whole process. And the, you know, one of my degrees is in industrial technology and graphics and all that type of work in school. So I just always have value to work that you are doing in these spaces. And I know David and I have had conversations about this work, you know, for years in terms of, because those are happening. Which is one of the reasons why we strongly support the work that we're able to do in terms of money from the office workers. Because, you know, it was not just money to do something on an immediate basis with no future growth, if you will, to a benefit. The work that you're doing fits exactly right into the guidelines that we want to have in terms of the gift that keeps on giving, if you will, because it continues to move us further and further down the line to investigate issues in terms of housing and support for housing. You probably know just as well as myself, or better than myself, that housing costs have risen, you know, almost 600 or 700% over the last 50 years, 50 years. And the amount of income has only risen 14%. Okay, so you see that that gap is continuously getting wider and wider in terms of why we have some of these challenges in terms of housing. And if you don't say nothing else but that, it just lets you know just how important work is that you have to do. So again, thank you.
I have a couple comments. I'm just like tickled. This is such a great opportunity for our community. I love the collaborative nature. I love that something good has come out, something bad, you know, that's what it is devastating, and it brought this opportunity to come together. Well, you know, hearing those numbers, I think we've got deferred maintenance of about $45 million. So it makes me realize we got work to do, but it's helpful to know what we're dealing with, the waiting list. I think it's going to bring a lot of clarity. I love that you're bringing that together, will help give us program and strategic decision-making tools. I'm curious, like are there some low-hanging fruit that we can go out there and get done? Are there some alternative ways to go in? I mean, I'm watching that, looking at that hoarding, and I went on a youth group, and we came across a similar situation. We spent two days just cleaning out a house. So we send work groups, kids' work groups, all across the country. We could do it in terms of one. David, I like your point about, you know, the opportunity to revitalize some homes. This past year, we did the comprehensive housing survey. That's another tool that helps us to be able to get some eyes on some of those houses that could be turned and go from vacant to productive. You know, we typically talk about leverage in economic space. I'm curious, like, because you've done one house on the street, which neighbor then makes the decision, I'm going to do my roof now, I'm going to do my furnace, particularly someone who is thinking like, you know, maybe I'm just going to move out and let this house go. But because you're stabilizing those neighborhoods, can't imagine the leverage, you know, that individual homeowners are investing back in their houses. And I love your goal, you know, no homes left without vital projects. So thank you all, this is awesome.
I'd just like to echo Commissioner Fairchild and Mayor's comments. This is very exciting. I remember in this guy's, he can probably attest to this, this is something that was well overdue in building a network. We would always have to work from one partner to another, but to see, and it's Jackson, right? To see that this all is like full circle and that it is in fact a working network is just, is amazing to see the work that is being done. I do have a question in regards to like this particular case, and as you mentioned, another project where you all had to do a clean out in the attic of the basement so that you could do the installation. Is there an education piece that goes along with this, so that we won't give back into these situations or whatever have you? Is there education about maintenance and upkeep of the property and so on?
That's a great question. I was talking about this with someone else yesterday. In the case of the first house, that was actually left over, the house, as many houses are passed down from her dad to her, it's all of her dad's things, and she just didn't have the ability to clean it out herself. And so in that case, there's not a lot of concern for it going back to the state. In this house, it was the first time we've worked with a hoarding house, and we have not put in any measures afterwards, but it's something we're thinking about for how can we, when we're thinking about education with homeowners, how can we build that in with our case managers? When we are working one-on-one directly with homeowners, that's usually the best way because they have a close connection and trust with us. So we're thinking about how we can build in some education, whether it be home maintenance also, best way to save energy, so you save energy, or save on your energy bills as well. So we're thinking about those things and building them into our growth.
Great. Well, let us know how we can be of support. And I have to, to Commissioner Fairchild's point, the deferred maintenance and that $45 million, how do we rather share costs and start, really start seeing the impact in our neighborhoods? So, thank you all.
Mayor, Commissioners, I just want to make one comment, really. You know, we did a lot of community engagement ahead of putting the Dayton Recovery Plan together.
Correct.
And one of the things that we did was pull together housing influencer groups, and really bringing many of these, all of these partners, and then some, together in a room several times over to talk about, you know, what their goals were, what their challenges were, how we could potentially structure something in Dayton Recovery Plan. And it was from those collaborative conversations that everyone was like, we should form this network. And why, you know, why we didn't, I still remember, I think it was Norbert who said, why we haven't done this before? I have no idea. Because I do believe a coordinated collaborative structure will make it much easier for funding partners to come alongside and really provide that, those funding sources to continue doing the great work in stabilizing our neighborhood. And I just want to applaud each and every one of you for your, you know, long-term partnership because you all, some of you have been at this table longer than I've been at this table. But it has been, it's really great to see, and I am very hopeful that in the future we'll be able to continue to help leverage.
I have a question. The 222 project, what was the timeframe on that?
That was from, it's different because everyone's ARPA contract started at a different time. So that's from, I believe Habitat started in early 2023. And then soon after with rebuilding?
Yeah, it was from 2023.
And then yours started later, but, so it's collected from that timeframe until now. So I think those numbers, that number was from February.
Just want to say too, there's no other collaboration that I'm aware of, especially in Ohio, that looks like this. And I speak to all of our Habitat partners throughout the state, everybody's kind of jealous of what we've been able to put together here in Dayton, and wondering if they could possibly replicate it. The problem, what I see is not, people aren't willing to come to the table the way they are here in Dayton, Ohio. It's great to work with these other folks, that everybody kind of rolls up their sleeves and has similar goals and helping to do more together. I'm not familiar with a collaboration like this in other parts of the country either, not to say I'm in every state or city, but I think we're real trailblazers in the sense of bringing this group together and trying to do more collectively. So it's really exciting from our perspective to be a part of this team.
Yeah, so that leads to what I was going to say a few months ago. The excitement that you seem to have with the group, you know, a bunch of smiles on your faces in terms of doing this work. So that validates again, they're moving in the right track and doing the right things. That gap that we talked about, 45, what was it before? Do you have any idea that you tried to put these things together?
I know there was that survey that was done. I'd have to look at that number though, but I believe there was some information in that housing study that was done a few years ago.
Because all the time, what we're trying to do all the time is to have some, if you want to talk about a benchmark, you know, where it is now and where it wasn't before. Clearly, you know, whatever it is right now, it was much higher before you started.
Well, I think that waiting list says a lot to you, that, you know. 2,000 homes, that's a lot of homes.
And it doesn't count the people who really need it and haven't reached out yet.
Yes.
There's, I would say, you were talking about word of mouth. One of the best ways, or maybe best isn't the best good word to use, but people with some of those cases find out about it through a neighbor. They're never going to hear about it, even if we drop a flyer off at their house, that house with the, that you did a whole bunch, that exterior looked completely different. I dropped off an application at that house a year prior and never heard back, and it was through a neighbor or someone that she reached out. So it is through that word of mouth that we're going to get some of these hardest cases. Yes, and building the trust.
And one final note, you know, there are a number of city staff here that are supporting the network. There's also, planning and economic leadership is also attending their monthly meetings, and so there's lots of cross-walking of data and, to your point, around our condition survey, making sure, you know, we are still focused really on getting those threes turned into twos and ones before they become fours and fives. And this network is really instrumental and going to be instrumental going in the future to get that done. So I just want to, you know, let you know that the city is working very closely to, you know, maximize impact here with the partners.
All right, I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your support.